Okay. Good evening and welcome to the June 5, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. And this is being recorded by Whitman Hansen Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are in open session and we are going to adjourn to executive session. And you might ask why. We are going to go into executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fireworks litigation discussion, treasurer collector, comfort dog program, building litigation discussion. So we have a lot there, all litigation and contract negotiations. And then our second reason is for executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes for May 16, 2023. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Brokaw vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, we are now adjourned and we will return to open session. Okay, and we are back from executive session. And we are now in open session. And with that, Mrs. Rain, I will prevail upon you to read our public announcements.
Certainly. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Cable and Internet Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Consult, Historical Commission, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hansen-ma.gov, or by calling Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. The Town Clerk's office will be closing at 12 noon on Wednesday, June 7, and will be closed all day Thursday and Friday for a clerk's conference. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, June 27, 2023; Select Board, July 11, 2023.
Thank you so much. Because we have Chief Mix with us, and we're thrilled to have you, Chief, we're going to take things a little bit out of order. And with that, we would love to hear about the Police Department update.
Well, thank you. I'm trying to be pretty brief. I'll give you a general overview of some of the things that have been going on. I'll start off with the number of calls we've had so far this year. It's just under 5,000, which is actually a little low for us. And I think I have a reason for that. And it isn't that people are behaving better. I just think it's a way that we're documenting some things. So I'm going to look into that a little more. With that, we've had 34 arrests, most have been for OUIs. Domestics is the top two reasons, which are usually our challenges every year, are usually what leads it every year. Thankfully, this town is overly, a fairly safe community, and not a lot of crime goes on, but we have our moments. Some of the things that we've been working on for the past year, we started working, actually the past nine months, we started working on accreditation, which we have to hit 394 different standards. Most of these things we're doing already, it's just we never put them on paper, whether it's the way we've trained people, the way we keep records. There's, like I said, there's 394 specific things or points that we have to meet for our sized department.
And that's because of police reform?
It's not because of police reform. I was actually working on, I've actually been a member of this group, the Police Accreditation Group. We've been a member of it for at least five years. It was a matter of you need to dedicate somebody to do this, one individual, maybe two individuals. So with staffing, we work things around, in this past year, I put Sergeant Calagiro in charge. As a sergeant, you know, he's been in the department over 20 years, he knows what's going on, he's got a good head on his shoulders. We could also move him out of the rotation, the regular patrol rotation. So two days a week, he comes in plainclothes and he just works on accreditations and standard issues. That being said, we're pretty much done redoing the rules and regulations, which I'll have to put in front of you after the union reviews them, because you guys will have to re-vote on them. There's no major changes there, they were fairly up to date to begin with. The policies and procedures, like I said, a lot of the things we do are taught to them in the academy, are taught to them in specialized training or in our own in-house training, but it wasn't always on paper. And most of our policies are outdated. The high liability ones, I've kept up to date, but a lot of the things are outdated. So we've, Sergeant Calagiro currently has draft policies to address 300 of the 394 standards. So in a year, he's done a lot. Now the trick is getting them out to the officers and keeping them up to date, which we're already finding a year into this. We started, they changed the standards on us, so he had to kind of go back and redo a lot of things. It's probably another, it'll probably take us another two years before we can get accredited. You get certified first, then you go through accreditation. So two years seems like a reasonable time period to do this. The other thing I wanted to tell you we've been up to, May and June are very busy for us. Besides trying to deal with year-end things and seeing if I have enough money to get to the year-end, this is the time of year that we have to make sure all of our training's wrapped up for the year. This goes to Police Reform Post, Police Officers Standards, Standards and Training. I have to report to them by June 30. Every officer's training for the year, make sure they've met all the standards for the year, address any issues that may have been for complaints that we got from citizens or had internal issues with. So that is rather kind of time-consuming. They just created a portal so that we can do it electronically now, we were doing it on spreadsheets and sending it in. A lot of this isn't a big deal for Hanson, we've been doing the requirements. I've been making sure that they get in service every year, which is now up to 40 hours, and make sure they get at least eight hours of firearms training. We usually do it 12, sometimes a little more. We periodically have them review use of force, the pursuit policies, the important things that want to make sure nobody gets hurt, and we're doing the right thing and keeping the liability for the town down. So May, usually sometime in September, we do a department-wide training where they do firearms for the day, go over use of force. We just did stop sticks, so to, and went over the pursuit policy, stop sticks of those spikes you throw on the road. And did firearms again for the third time this year. I have to throw a shout-out to Plymouth County Sheriff, Joe McDonald. They have an indoor range that we usually get somewhere between February and March, where we do handgun, we can do a low-light shooting to help the guys with night, so then we're not, not shooting bothering neighbors at 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night. Plus, it's usually a one-on-one with the firearms instructor and each officer. So it's a great tool, and the sheriff has invested a lot of money in that, and we're grateful that he can send that around to us. I just sent officers off ATV training, we have three ATVs, really, we only have two because one of them's always broken. So I just sent some more officers off to be trained in the utilization of those. We'll try and periodically put out maybe some patrols. For the most part, those are used for us. We've used them for crowd control during the riots, we've used them, oh wait, demonstrations. We've used them for search and rescue. So we do, they do get some use, but I haven't been doing a lot of patrols. Knock on wood, we haven't been getting a lot of dirt bike complaints either. Also, I have officers that we've been doing training in human trafficking. You wouldn't think that's something that really would affect Hanson, but it affects every community. You never know when it's going to creep up, either through business fronts, or for that matter, when we stumble across some people that might be transitioning through. I got two officers, excuse me, three officers going at the end of the month for another training. That's been paid for and supplied by the District Attorney's Office through a grant. So thanks again to DA Cruz for that. Another thing that we've done, and you will be seeing here at Town Hall real soon, I'm not sure Lisa, if you even know it yet, but PCO, PCO Hope, Plymouth County Outreach, we deal with substance abuse issues, they're extremely supportive for us with that. They had a grant for Narcan boxes. So like you have AED boxes, they, there's one already installed at the library. The library had requested one, I acquired it, and then I said, well, why don't we put one in the senior center, because there's not always access to both sides of the building, and we're going to put one here at Town Hall. The Fire Department has said that they will reach out to offer training to the employees so they know how to use it, if they don't already and if they're uncomfortable with it. So again, a big shout-out to them. While we're on that topic, if you're not familiar with PCO, they are an extremely helpful resource for us. We've partnered with them, I think I partnered with them before they were actually PCO. They assist us when we have overdoses, or if we have anybody with some type of substance abuse, we can refer to them. They help us get beds for those individuals or outpatient. We, if the, if the person who's suffering from addiction doesn't want to cooperate, we give resources to the families. They provide Narcan to the families if that's needed for the fentanyl issue or the opioid issue. They also have been a big help in tracking and keeping up with statistics for us. And you probably, people don't realize it because it seems to happen in the background a lot. Sergeant Alicia Durgan is my main go-to on this, is her liaison. She's one of the outreach officers, as well as Officer Harrington. And Detective O'Brien does more with the PCO help, which deals more with like homeless and mental health issues and stuff. Those are the three keys to dealing with Plymouth County outreach. But we average over the past, let's see, since '17, we are averaging one outreach a month. So that means somebody overdosed, either in town or a resident overdosed out of town. And then we did an outreach to the family. You know, sometimes it's, sometimes it's 11, at one year it was 11, and it's been 18 and 20 another year. So about once a month, on average, we're going out. That also translates into one to two of our residents not making it a year. The plus that I saw with some of the statistics, and I didn't bring them all with me though, was that the number of times we've gone out, out of those 12, eight times people went. Now, it might be the same person twice, but eight times somebody at least accepted the initial help from the outreach workers. So it's a, it's a great program. We, I have to meet with them tomorrow and in the near future as well. They're funded on federal grants mainly, which are drying up in October. So we're going to look to see about using the opioid money that the state got, that's coming to the town, to help fund them. So I think we're what, $5,000 or $6,000, I think at this point. Lisa, you had?
It's about $8,900.
Yeah, so we're looking to use some of that money going forward. So if that happens, I'll be in front of you, you'll see a warrant article to move the money over there and send it to them. Again, they're an outstanding resource, and they're actually a model that they're using around the country now. While we're on the subject of mental health and substance abuse, I know I told you quite a while ago that we were looking to get a clinician. We did a grant with Carver, Halifax, and Plimpton. Grant's finally settled, we had some bumps in the road there, but Department of Public Health finally settled the grant with Children and Family Services, who are on a new Bedford in Plymouth. They've been advertising for a clinician, and we're running into the same problem as most everybody else. They can't get any. They either can't get somebody qualified, or the ones that want to do it are not interested in doing it at night. We had a, we had a great candidate, and unfortunately, just some things fell through with the money at that point, and that candidate moved on, which I think he would have been perfect. But we're still looking, and we're trying, and we're not the only community in this So we'll keep you posted on that, hopefully that'll, we'll get somebody soon. Mention that we have one open position, the resumes have to be in by, it's the 16th of June, which would be Friday. We've gotten a whopping seven applications. When I, 10 years ago, I would have had 40, 45, 50, easy. And we have specific requirements we're putting out there, and that we're looking for somebody who's already academy-trained. We're not the only town having this issue. I was speaking to the Carver chief last week, he's same boat, hardly any applicants. Towns are just, I've actually seen some towns hiring ad agencies to put it out there, that they're even trying to hire people, it's crazy. That being said, Carver and I, we're going to discuss this with some of the other towns, probably Plimpton and Halifax, because it just makes sense that we coordinate efforts to start doing our own exams, similar to what the civil service exams used to be, and see if we can pool our money, hire a company to do the exams, and start trying to hire people fresh to then send to the academy. Right now, what I've been, lack of a better term, we've been poaching for 10 years, and it's worked out great for us, it really has. If I wasn't poaching, we had the part-time officer program that is now done away with because of post, so I couldn't train them, get them, get a feel for them, and then send them off to an academy and feel confident in that investment. Now you're just going to have to start hiring people cold and hope that they make it. I teach at the academy, usually I teach the first week of the academy, and it's amazing to me that there's young people there, and they show up and within a week, they're like, yeah, never mind, and they leave. It's, it's absolutely crazy to me. But that's...
Now, Chief, for the opening that we have, we want them to have already attended the academy?
Yes, that's what I'm seeking.
Are we willing to be flexible about that?
Well, I'm trying to do my due diligence, so, or if you want to say it another way, I'm being cheap.
Yeah.
Okay? Plus, I'm being cheap in a lot of ways. One, to send them to academy, pay the tuition, outfit them, and by the time they get onto the academy, we've been paying them for about a year. I'm $70,000 minimum into them.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they're going to walk out the door, or the day after they graduate the academy, I don't know if a town that can afford to pay them more is going to go grab them.
Yeah.
Trying to take people who are academy-trained, so that's what I put out. If we don't have a decent candidate, or a good candidate, or somebody I'm confident in, then we won't hire anybody, and we'll look into this exam, but we're putting off this position again, probably for a year to do that.
But if they're academy-trained, they're probably already working somewhere.
They're academy-trained, they're probably working somewhere, or they, there's some programs too, where they can be the self-sponsor, or Merrimack, Merrimack College has a program where part of their college education, they get certified by the MPTC, which is the one who certifies all the officers. So I'm also very apprehensive when I do get somebody who's working someplace else who applies, because am I just getting somebody else's problem? Are they hiding or running from something? It gets tricky too, because we've gotten, this round we haven't, but we get out of state candidates, which they can transfer over, but it's tough to get a certification on a state and bring it into Massachusetts. There's very few states that Massachusetts accepts, accepts them, so.
Does Hanson use specials, or you don't use specials?
Well, with the, so with police reform, they did away with the part-time academies. They don't exist anymore, so.
So that intermittent academy doesn't exist?
Does not exist anymore.
Right.
That's one of the things I used to do too. I'd take people that were interested, and I had some that we'd train them, you know, they'd work for us for a while, we'd put them through our field training officer program, get them signed off to work in the cruises, or we'd get a feel for them, and somebody else would grab them, or we've, a number of them, we sent to the full-time academy afterwards. They became full-timers with us. It was a great way to do it, but with police reform, they're not accepting that part-time academy anymore, it's done away with, so I don't really have any choices anymore. That's part of the reason you're seeing all these cities and towns having a problem. The pool, they drain the pool on us, so. Anything else on the hiring?
No, no.
All right, so that being said, knock on wood, this year's actually been a pretty good year for the department, this fiscal year. We've had some challenges every year. I sit here and tell you how the HVAC doesn't work. I had two technicians in my office today, and we have them going through part of what I call our wish list, things that they've seen as problems that we couldn't afford to fix, that I have a little bit of money at the end of the year, we're going to try and fix, but we can't, we'll get over next, into next fiscal year, and maybe we'll see at the October Town Meeting for an article, maybe we won't. I'm going to see what they can get through. The company that we're using, we switch companies, and not to knock the companies before them, but the company we're using now is, I just find them outstanding. They, they find the problem, they tell you the problem, they give you a price, it's done. And, you know, emergency work, they've been right there. They've kind of jerry-rigged some stuff together for me to, because I said, I don't have the money to fix that right now, so they've been great to work with. I think actually Town Hall's starting to use them now too, so you guys might actually get...
That would be delightful. That would be delightful.
I mean, honestly, a big problem with building maintenance, and I've seen it for 10 years that I've been here, is no one really oversees it. We're all left to our own devices, and I said when I first took the job as chief, I said I didn't know I was going to be a building maintenance supervisor or a building superintendent.
We are leaning in a direction.
I understand.
We're moving in the direction.
We're trying.
Yep.
And that being said, I can't do anything but praise Charlie, because every time I call him, he's there. What he doesn't know, he'll figure out, or he'll find somebody. So he's doing great, so he's another one I have to give a shout-out to. The other challenges we have, I know we moved our proper money around to, for one of the cruises next year. There's no hybrids right now, I can't get one. So maybe mid-year, late fall, we'll be able to spend that money. But I didn't want to buy another gas car at this point, I want to keep with the program we've been doing, it's working, knock on wood. We've had a couple of issues, but overall, we're doing well with it. The fleet's in very good condition overall. Some positives I had, money, you'll probably be thrilled to hear this, I look like I'm doing very well. Salary-wise, my goal every year, and I do this in the budget on purpose, I try and leave one week's payroll when I do my budget, which is about $40,000. So if I'm in that $40,000 mark, turning stuff back to you every year, things worked out perfectly. This year, we're definitely in that ballpark. The big reason is we didn't have any major storms, knock on wood, and I didn't have any major incidents that, you know, would revolve, would involve days and days of overtime. Now, did I spend more overtime than I kind of anticipated this year? A little bit, because of some of the training needs that we have to do. There's easy eight hours more than I planned on this year that were required between posts and our internal training, that is a little higher than normal, but we did well. Also, I know there's about $15,000 I'm going to turn back to you on the vehicle line because of trades. We buy new cars now, I've been trading them in, knocked down the cost of the original ones. We've been getting some decent money for them. I'm not sure who buys them, but God bless them. I wouldn't buy a used police cruiser, but there's about $15,000 there, around about $120,000 left, so we did good there. And then last, I got to give a shout-out to the deputy chief, so Chief Casey, he's been doing a great job. I couldn't ask for a better number two right now. He's really been doing everything I need him to do. I got him working on a couple of grants, I think he's probably cursing me right now, because every time I send him another grant, he's like, you know, we're not going to get this. I'm like, ah, you never know. And lo and behold, I made him do one, and it looks like we're going to get some new flashing lights for the school zone.
That's right.
But, because it's not on school street, which drives me nuts. Like, you think that they have flashing lights on school street, right? No, they just come on 58. So anyways, he did get that grant. I got him working on the, on a body armor grant to offset the article from Town Meeting. Hopefully, we can get that. And another traffic grant, but I'm not so sure on the traffic enforcement grant, that's been a little iffy lately. With that, do you have any questions?
Anybody have anything for the chief? That was an outstanding update.
Thank you very much. Tried to be as quick as I could too. I know it's going to be late.
We appreciate it. Please thank everybody, you know, the entire staff for doing such a great job every day, unsung heroes, very much behind the scenes. And as usual, thank you for your leadership there.
Thank you. And I got to, I actually, I know I mentioned a few offices individually, we are extremely lucky for the pool of offices we have, they're outstanding, they really are. All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care. All right. We are actually, got to circle back, because I was taking things out of order, which always throws me for a loop. So appointments, we've got appoint Samantha Tucker as Camp Kwani lifeguard, appoint Mateo Santa Lucias, Camp Kwani lifeguard, appoint James Gillen as Camp Kwani lifeguard, appoint Brogan Byron as Camp Kwani lifeguard, appoint Julian Clark as gate attendant, appoint Isabella Mello as gate attendant, appoint Michael Gianino as gate attendant, appoint Nicholas Curvells as gate attendant, appoint Brady Lapointe as a gate attendant, appoint Mary Alessante Lucia as gate attendant, appoint Liliana Lowe as gate attendant, appoint Zoe Buckley as gate attendant, appoint Lynn McCoy as gate attendant. I will entertain a motion to make those appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Then we've got our annual appointments list.
We don't have to read this, do we?
Which, no, we don't need to read all of those. Ms. McDowell, you, I first off want to thank you for all of your due diligence on this. I know that this was a list that had been somewhat neglected in the past, and perhaps was not up to date and looking all spiffy for you to deal with. So we appreciate you shaping that up. One thing I did want to mention is, you might be asking yourself the same question I asked myself, the 200th anniversary committee, shouldn't that have ended in 2020? Well, yes, indeed it should have. Of course, we did have that little thing called COVID in between, and so that kind of stalled some of the activities. But also, Lee Gamache, if you guys will recall, had an article through Community Preservation for linen maps, restoration of linen maps, and that's sort of their little swan song in their last kind of act is the 200th anniversary committee. So they were hoping that they could still be in existence, and not for the entire year. So I think for that, Ms. McDowell, I know you're the one who had the conversation with Mrs. Gamache, I was thinking more of an October 2023 timeframe, based on the fact you said they had to have a couple of meetings this summer. Okay, so that term would end October 2023, I'm sorry, October, yeah, October 2023. The remainder of the terms are ending in 2023, but are annual appointments. So for the motion, they would end in 2024, Ju, well, the last day of June in 2024. So did anybody in looking at this have any questions or concerns, or anything that they wanted to call out before we have sort of a carte blanche motion?
Liz, the agricultural committee gone?
I could not find anybody to confirm that it existed or any...
Yeah, the only, I know that I have an appointment letter through 2023.
I think...
Yeah, no, I know, it's kind of gone. When Nancy died, it kind of fell apart.
Okay, so...
So is everybody, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Capital Improvement, just so I'm clear, three names here, there's more than three names, but these three names, I'm assuming, are just the names that are due for reappointment here?
Correct. Yes, and thank you for mentioning that, because Mr. Hill felt that we were maybe lacking in this. This list is only those terms that expired for these particular committees and boards in 2023. There's certainly a ton of other people that are on these boards who just don't happen to have terms that, you know, expire.
Does this include permanent, I use the word permanent probably incorrectly, and alternates?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
I, this is great. I mean, I know what it took for forever to get here, but a spreadsheet with all of them, it must be part of this spreadsheet, I'm assuming.
Yeah, she has that, she just sorted it out just for the ones that expire.
For this purpose.
Yeah, Ms. McDowell... Yeah, Ms. McDowell, could you share that with her? Okay, that, that'd be great. Um, any other questions or concerns? And are you okay with the High Street thing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, then, um, I will entertain a motion to uh, reappoint um, all of the folks that are listed with their respective committees for a term to expire um, at the end of June of twenty twenty-four, with the exception of the two-hundredth anniversary committee, um, all of whom uh, will have a term to expire in October of twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
That wasn't as painful as it could have been. Um, and we had the police department update. Uh, Mr. Glass is coming back to our meeting on the twenty-seventh. So that brings us to the uh, vote to create a recreation committee. As you will recall, at our um, strategic planning session that we had last week, and again, the one just prior to that, um, there was a discussion based on the fact that what formerly was known as the Recreation Commission is now the Camp Kwani um, Commission, um, with a laser focus on all things Camp Kwani, which is quite a large laser fo-, laser focus, cause there's a lot going on up there. But that leaves us with a uh, void, which we've had for quite a while, um, but never really done much of both, um, to try to address the recreational needs of the town. And this comes up time and time and time again. It just came up, I went last night to the um, library strategic planning session, and everybody was asked to paint like their perfect utopian world of what they would like, and more recreational programs came up. And it came up in the context of building a stronger community, of breaking down some of those barriers, um, and of just, you know, having a community um, that's fun to live in, that has little events that you can look forward to. And we have some of those, like we've got the tree lighting and, you know, other little things like that, Hanson Day and the like. Uh, this would be a committee that would be responsible for, um, you know, for, for coming up with recreational programs. Um, now, we don't have to figure this all out tonight. Um, the vote tonight is to create a recreation committee, but I think we need to have a further discussion, because what is a recreation committee without an actual boots-on-the-ground employee who's going to actually execute all of the fabulous ideas that a recreation committee might come up with? Um, so it's up to you guys if we want to discuss this and just create the committee tonight, or if we wanna, yeah, or if we, these, these were the ideas that were discussed at, um, both, well, various, in various capacities. Um, so what are your thoughts?
My thought is to create the committee and let the committee form ideas.
Kind of drive it.
Kind of drive.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't, I, we can't put a position out there right now without even knowing what that's going to entail.
Okay, uh, what are, what are your thoughts?
Mine?
Yeah.
Oh, um, yeah, I, I'd, I'd make a motion to, to create the recreation committee. Um, as a committee.
Yeah, how many people do we want?
Five.
I agree.
With alternates.
Um, do, do we want alternates?
I'm assuming you're gonna want, similar to conservation, you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna want to be involved.
Okay, all right.
And we had talked about it.
Two alternates, two, three alternates?
I would say at least three. We've talked about it before, is the, a, a committee to form a committee, we don't wanna do. But the committee that starts this out is gonna be more the people that are on all the committees.
It's gonna be.
But then, once it's running, it's gonna be, somebody teaching tennis is gonna wanna be on the committee and some, but they're not gonna know how the committee, so it's, it almost seems like it's gonna morph into that, but in the beginning, it needs to be more people that want to help form the committee.
Okay.
But then it's gonna probably go away.
So this is, in a way, we're not saying this, but it's a committee to form a committee, like they, they kind of have to figure out, work with us on charter, objectives, all that kind of stuff. Okay, all right, so are you guys comfortable with five members and two alternates? Okay, all right, so we're good with that. And there was, I believe, a motion to form a recreation committee. Did you have something, Mrs. Green?
This is in addition to.
The Camp Kwani.
Camp Kwani.
This is, Camp Kwani's focused on our Camp Kwani.
And supports Camp Kwani.
This is in addition to Parks and Fields. Parks and Fields is working on the parks and the fields, but not recreation programming. They're not doing any recreation programming. Um, so these guys would do things like, um, maybe say a concert or uh, food truck rodeo or like, I, I don't know, fill in the gap. Lots of the activities would probably end up being up at the High Street Park.
Do we have people that want to be on this committee yet?
I don't know, I, I suspect we do, but I don't know that for sure. It's not like people.
What was the question?
I'm sure you, I'm sure you might.
Yeah.
What was, what was her question?
She said, do we have people who want to be on the committee?
I know there are multiple people who are.
As far as the High Street um, committee goes, cause this is one of the things I wanted to um, talk about in a larger context. In order for us to actually apply for grants, we would need somebody in charge of things like recreation, oversight of the, of the grounds, things like that. So this would actually, is it, is really a kind of a pivotal role to get thing, if we, if we lump in the recreation committee in a way that makes sense for High Street, we can actually start making some significant progress around grant writing and funding for a lot of the projects.
So this will help further your mission.
If we, if we ask them to do that, yes.
Okay, okay.
To do it correctly.
Yeah, and the first step, I think, is just creating it. So I think we need to go there.
All right, so we had a motion, and I don't know if we had a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, fantastic. So five people, two alternates, recreation committee. Uh, we probably need to think about at a future meeting, kind of what, we need to give some kind of marching orders or objectives there. We don't wanna just kind of like, you know, have it be an amoeba. Um, so, um, I, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So we've now established a recreation commission.
Do we want to add it to Ann's list of announcements every meeting?
Most definitely, yes.
Okay.
Lynn's probably all over that.
Yeah.
Um, and at our, um, also at our strategic planning um, session, I'm trying to keep us honest about the things we talked about at the strategic planning session, cause it's so easy to have three and four months go by, a town meeting, a million other things, and then you show up and you're like, gee, we haven't really, you know, effectuated the change we wanted to. Um, discuss light control building for storage. So at our strategic planning session, um, there was um, quite a robust discussion about the fact we've got this light control building. Um, we may have other thoughts or plans or, or even just be contemplating, um, what we will do for highway, what we will do for Maqon, but in the interim, the fact of the matter is, we've got this building. And it seems as though it would be wasteful for us to not use it in some capacity. We're limited in the capacities that we can use it for, we know that. On the deed itself, Mr. DeFries talked about this at our um, strategic planning session last week. Uh, there are restrictions, no gardens, no schools, blah, blah, blah. There's a whole bunch of restrictions. Um, and Mr. DeFries has applied for a brownfields grant, um, which if we get, cannot be used for cannabis or municipal purposes. So we may have additional um, restrictions, but what we know right now was, uh, Charlie Baker had suggested, um, that we've got a need for fire and we've got a need for highway to just do storage of their equipment. Nothing fancy, not a full-blown highway, um, building, but just someplace safe and out of the elements that they can store their large equipment.
Dry storage.
Dry storage. Um, so, um, I think, what are our next steps here, Ms. Oh, oh, yeah, go ahead, guys.
My, my only thing is that it, you mentioned brownfield, and it can't be municipal. My, my, my only concern is if we, I don't wanna do brownfield if it excludes the storage, you know, how we want, I don't wanna do it if it's gonna restrict that we're able to use the building in a way that makes sense to the town. Just as something to, to think about as we're moving forward.
So, um, I, I, I actually brought that up with our town planner today. Um, as far as municipal use, is storage gonna be considered municipal use, where it's just storage? And we both come to the same conclusion, it's gonna be a gray area. Um, but fortunately, we, we have time to figure that out. Um, we don't have the grants yet, so we have, you know, if we need to get the equipment out of the elements to protect them in that matter, there's no reason to move forward with that. If we are awarded the grants, which probably we will not here until the end of the summer, early fall, um, we can approach the grant administrator and ask them to define what non-municipal use means, um, and see if, if the storage falls into that area or not. Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense for us not to, to move forward with the brownfields. We really need, based on the restrictions on the deed, it's really important for us to find out what's going on out there, so we can address it. Um, and then move forward with that, with that, that area as, um, you know, to become a revenue maker for the town.
So you're saying go forward with the brownfields, and, and it may mean we can't use it for storage?
It might not, though. We don't know.
We don't know.
I'm wondering, Ms. Green, does it make sense for us to try to get that clarification now, so that as a board, we can make a decision if we were to get awarded the brownfields grant, or ma-, or, or maybe we might even make a decision, and I'm not suggesting we're going to, but we just might, make a suggestion that we say to Mr. DeFries, we might want you to pull back that application.
Can I ask a question? What is the brownfields grant going to grant us?
The money to clean up all of the remaining remnants that were not cleaned up from that initial DEP cleanup. And we know that that property was cleaned up to DE, to certain DEP specifications. But as Mr. DeFries mentioned to us last week, again, independent, third-party, coming in with, you know, expertise in engineering, um, that does not mean that you would be able to plant a garden there, or you're gonna be able to really do much of anything.
It's probably septic system.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, Ms. Green.
If I may, so the brownfields grant is actually to conduct the investigation to find out what's in the ground. Um, we would hire a licensed site professional who would conduct a phase one, and depending on the amount we get, maybe a phase two. So phase one is the initial uncover, you know, what's in the ground. Phase two is to, to evaluate the amount of the pollution, um, identify what it is, and, and identify a cost to clean it up. So that's what the brownfields would do. Um, the light control has not actually been deemed by the state as a brownfield, but this grant, once we uncover what's there and what it is, how much, and what the cost is, we have the, can have the state deem that property to be a brownfield. That way, we would be able to move forward with applying for grants to clean it up, once we know what it is, how much is there, and what the cost is.
All right, so clarifying question. If we get the brownfields grant, which is just the assessment.
Right.
Are we, we're not required to then clean it up as a brownfield, which, is it, is it the cleanup that, that, that paints us into the corner of you can't use it for municipal use or cannabis, or is it the giving of the grant to us, that we cannot at any point in the future use it for those purposes?
It's, well, it's the giving of the grant, the awarding of the grant.
Okay, so we definitely need to get a definition of municipal purposes.
Yeah, so that, that, yeah, that's, we, we were talking about that this morning. So what I plan to do is reach out to the One Stop Program to see who the administrator is for that particular grant, and see who I can talk with to, to get a more, a more definition on municipal use.
Okay.
Um, and then hopefully, we can, we can get an answer on that.
Okay, so if you can just kind of keep us updated, um, and I know, I think independently, Mr. Baker was going, or, or both of you were gonna kind of look at what the cost would be for that building to be used for the dry storage. Um, I know it's, it's not gonna be hu-, it's definitely not gonna be the seven or eight million dollars that it would be to make it highway, potentially even more, cause it's been a while since we've looked at it. Uh, we'd, we'd be talking very basic, like, I think Mr. O'Brien, Chief O'Brien at our strategic planning session said it needed to have a fire, uh, uh, smoke alarm system or a fire alarm system, um, and, um, electricity. Those were the two, like, kind of fundamental. But it didn't necessarily need to have septic, um, and, and some other things that you'd need to have if the building was gonna be occupied.
Exactly.
Shouldn't have considered heat based on what was going to be stored in it.
Yeah, yeah. So I assume Charlie's gonna continue to work with Chief O'Brien and, um, and, you know, our Inspector Kerry Glass and you, and, okay. So as that starts to become more fully formed, I just wanna keep us on task, so that when we're meeting on October seventeenth, we've got, you know, we've got movement and details and, you know, um, and something to report back. Okay, um, discuss insertion of town information in tax water bills. Uh, one of the breakout groups, um, at the strategic planning session was, um, engagement, citizen engagement. And one of the ideas that was seemingly low-hanging fruit, um, was, can we tell people about things like, um, volunteer opportunities, how to reduce your tax, you know, if you're a senior, what abatements might be, or defer, you know, deferments might be, um, available to you, whatever, fill in the blanks, whatever it is that we think we need to tell people about, the dates of town meetings, which I think they're already doing, um, you know, those te-, those types of things. How can we use, we know that that's mailed out to everybody who's a taxpayer, right? So, um, the reason we discussed it is because some people may have Facebook, some people might not, some might have Instagram or Twi-, Twitter. We don't know, but we do know that people have to pay their taxes, right? Death and taxes, two sure things. Um, and so we thought that might be a good way. Um, and I recognize that our treasurer collector is not in right now, so we're not really able to broach this subject, but I'm hoping when she's back, um, that we're able to broach that subject, and it's on the top of the list.
And what we can do as well is, um, reach out to Capital Strategic Solutions and, and ask their assistance in helping us, um, actually draft and, and develop the little card that will be sent out.
Like a newsletter type thing, about a one pager.
Or even if it's a, even if it's not a one pager, even if it's a buck slip with a link, you know, with a, like, click here, if you wanna hear more about what's going on, something like that, you know?
Um, a QR code.
Yes, QR code.
QR codes.
I bet you're getting all hip and hoppin'.
The thing that we were wondering is, would we be able to do this through whoever stuffs the envelopes for the tax bills? We don't know who does that. Is that contracted out, or is that something done in-house? I mean, for the, for the, uh, postage, which is now up to sixty-five cents a letter, um, you can get up to an ounce in there. So we could put a sheet of paper in there, or, or, or whatever. That's what we're wondering, is, is that possible?
I, I have to find out who, who does that task. Um, I have not been able to find that out yet, but I will find that out by the next meeting.
And we've ta-, we talked about tax bills, but we also talked about water bills.
Water bills, yeah.
And it may very well be that Jean's handling both, because she's the treasurer collector. Um, but I, it seems to me as though if we want to do something with the water bills, we'd wanna, um, engage the water commission to make sure that.
The other thing about the water bills is, everybody gets the water bills. Does everybody get a tax bill, or do they go to mortgage companies?
Oh, that, no, you get one even if the mortgage company is paying.
I don't know.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
I get a tax bill.
Everybody gets one, yep. Everyone gets one, yep. Um, I think they're kind of like neutral on whether you're paying it or somebody else's. It's like, this is the tax that's due. Um, okay, any further discussion on that one? Just, that was just a little follow-up. Um, creation of committee determining use of Maqon property after demolition. Um, so as you all know, cause Ms. Green's told us, and we've talked about it multiple times, um, we're pursuing the use of, of ARPA money for, um, the demolition. We've gotten a, a RFP response, which is less than a million dollars, which is great, because that's what we, we're thinking that it would be. Um, and we need to create a committee to now look at, once that building is torn down, what are we going to do with the footprint? And I just thought we'd discuss it as a group, um, if, what, what do people think that needs to look like? I could see it being potential users, you know, so like some folks from Parks and Fields, some folks from the library, some folks from the senior center, some citizens at large, um, you know, that type of thing. Maybe like, I was thinking maybe like, I don't know, seven people, only because we already have to have like, somebody from the select board, somebody from the library, some from the senior center, um, and somebody from Parks and Fields. So that's already four right there. And I hate to have a even number, cause that doesn't work out if you, if you have a split vote. Um, so I know seven seems unwieldy, but we could always reduce it if we need to. What do you guys think about that?
I think you need, I agree, you need the seven.
And I also think this is a very important, similar to the High Street, okay? These two pieces of property are really pivotal in town, in terms of the way they're used um, for now, and then how they're gonna impact future generations. Because what we do with that footprint, this, once that genie's out of the bottle, you can't put it back in. Once we put a library there, or, you know, do the fields or whatever, uh, that's, that's a commitment that the town's making to the use of that property. So I wanna make sure we're being thoughtful and incredibly inclusive about the people that are on the committee. All right, so, um, I don't know what to call it. Does anybody have any suggestions? I really don't wanna call it Maqon reuse. I'm fighting.
It should be the committee to determine the use of Maqon property after demolition. It should be the committee to determine the use of McQuon property after demolition.
Yes. Com- commission.
Don't go into, don't go into advertising.
The first and final McQuon property reuse committee.
The final McQuon reuse committee.
The real final, the true.
The final McQuon property reuse committee.
Really, really, really final.
We mean it this time, committee.
All right, why don't we call it the final McQuon property reuse committee?
We mean it this time.
All right, and then, and then we will, and then we will have a member from the library, select board, senior center and Parks and Fields, I'm sorry, and we also need to have highways. So there's only going to be two at-large members. So I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Seven.
Okay, any further discussion?
There's three reallys.
It's the final McQuon property reuse committee. I don't even know what that acronym, I hope that acronym works out.
Why don't we just call it the McQuon property reuse committee?
We could call it the McQuon property reuse.
Don't put final in it, right?
No one needs to get any risk.
We really should get more creative and try to get an acronym in there, but I just don't have the mental capacity to name.
MPRC?
MP, yeah.
What is it?
Sounds like medicine.
What is it?
MPRC.
All right, I think I had a motion.
You get a motion second.
A second, okay. All in favor? All right, great. And then we have accept Timothy Van Amranger's resignation from the Highway Department. Ms. Green, was there any color commentary that we needed to put on that or is it as appears?
As appears, he was offered a position in the private sector, I believe.
I will entertain that motion.
So moved with regret.
And the effective date, Ms. Green?
June 2nd.
Okay, oh, all right, well, so it's already happened. All right, and did I have a second?
I'll second it.
Fantastic, all in favor? Great.
Did we miss number six?
Two and six we still have to circle back to.
Yes, we do. Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. Accept donation to the council on aging from Roberta O'Reilly. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
With regret, all in favor?
There's no regret, you're accepting donation.
Oh, donation, sorry.
Opposite of regret, we thank you very much.
It's been a long day today. Thank you very much, Roberta. All in favor? Great. All right, we're going to circle back, discuss committee and board vacancies. I think Lynn had a handout last week, it might have been this week's as well. Yep. And, do you mind if I, so we had very briefly discussed, but had not voted on having the liaison assignments and, and this is more than just liaison. This is also committee assignments.
Right.
So we've got, I'm glad that you said that you thought it was hot because I really am like, I am extremely, I thought I was feverish and ill. So we need to work on that AC. So we've got ZBA liaison, we have a Camp Kawani liaison, and we have a Parks and Fields committee. I don't know, remember if Jim was an act, I think he was a committee member, not just a liaison, but... So are there any of those? And it doesn't have to be tonight. And we've also got the existing lists, which is, you are the, Mr. Weeks, your Board of Health, Capital Improvement, you and Mr. Heel, Community Preservation, me, Conservation Commission, Mr. Heel, Mrs. Rain is Council on Aging, Economic Development is me, Energy is Mr. Heel, FinCon, Mr. Weeks, Fire Department, Mr. Heel, Mr. Weeks, High Street, Highway is Mrs. Rain, Library is me, McQuon blah 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 is me, Parks and Fields TBD, Planning, Mr. Heel, Police, Mr. George, Recreation Commission. I don't recall volunteering for that, but, oh, that might have been before we split out to Camp Kawani. But I'm more than glad to do that. I'm more than glad, I'm more than glad to. Were you going to volunteer, Ed? Because I feel like you really can.
I was, I was going to.
Okay, did you, was there something you wanted to resign from or?
No, no.
You just want more?
No, I don't, I don't want more, but...
I, I would welcome you as like, I think that this is a committee that actually could use two select board members because it's brand new. We need to give them a vision. There's a lot there, so I'd be fine with both, two people being assigned to that.
At least for now.
Yeah, but, yeah, and then we can take the training wheels off.
Okay.
Stormwater and drainage, Mr. Heel. And Mr. Heel, we do need to have a discussion. I think we're planning to give you guys purpose and meaning there.
Yes, yes.
And then Transfer Station Task Force, wow, is that what it's being called? That sounds really great. Mr. Weeks and then Veteran Service Agent, Mr. George. Is there anything people don't want to be on that they're currently on or something that they'd like to be on that they're not? Okay, so I will entertain a motion and we'll think about the openings we have and whether anybody wants to be on them. It does feel like everybody's, you know, I think spread fairly thin when we think about the liaisons and the various assignments. So I will entertain a motion if we add Mr. Heel to the Recreation Committee, Ms. McDowell.
And change it to my commission and committee?
Well, we're calling it the committee. That's why I said, yeah. So we're re-titling it committee and we're adding Mr. Heel. He's going to ride shotgun or I'm riding shotgun, somebody's riding shotgun. And is there any other change? No.
We've got to change that name.
Yeah, and then just change the title of the McQuon Property Reuse Committee. It just doesn't sound, or whatever. Any, any other discussion on that one?
Does nobody want to be on the Board of Appeals?
No, that's what I said. Does anybody want to be on those?
Looking at you, do you want to be on any of these things?
Nothing about it.
Okay.
Do you, is...
Parks and, what's Parks and Fields?
Yeah, I was looking at that one.
Parks and Fields is literally the, the maintenance of like the baseball fields and the soccer fields and...
You can put me on that one.
Okay, all right, so you'll be the liaison for that, okay.
This is just liaison, you're not actually...
No, these are also, this is a mixed thing.
And you can be on a, on...
So like Energy Committee, you're on that committee.
Yeah, all of them, I'm on the committees.
Yeah, Capital Improvement, you guys are on the committee.
But this doesn't mean you have to be on the committee.
So...
Yeah, so just for clarity, let's go through on, on, okay. Board of Appeals, so Board of Appeals would be a liaison position. Board of Health would be a liaison position. Camp Kawani would be a liaison position. Capital Improvement is actual part of the committee. Community Preservation is liaison. Ed, now typically this would be a liaison position for conservation, but Ed's actually on conservation.
I feel like last time we did this, though, if we were on the committee, we made ourselves liaisons because we were just...
That is what we did.
Yeah, so it's, these are two, this is a liaison list. It's just we also are on the other list, members.
Well, no, like I'm not the, I'm not the Economic Development Committee liaison, I'm on that committee.
Right, you're in, you're on both lists.
Yeah, I'm on the list, like I have, I'm a voting member, I guess.
So can we then make this a liaison list then and just, just say, okay? Because you give committee updates anyways, so why wouldn't we just have everybody here also moonlight as a liaison?
I'm totally fine with that, but, yes, like you can wear two hats, but I think for clarity's sake, we need to say in which, when you, whether you are a voting member of that group or not, because for instance, like you're a liaison to the Board of Health, but you're not a voting member of the Board of Health.
Right.
So I think we need a, like a, an extra column.
But I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, but if I was to leave and somebody else became a liaison, they would just be a liaison, they wouldn't necessarily be a member. So you don't have to be a member to be a liaison, so even if you write it down here.
Yeah.
Right, but he's saying in this case, we knew that we were members, so we became liaisons too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, as far as this list goes, right here, the idea is if you're serving on the Energy Committee, it would make sense to just make you the liaison to the Energy Committee. So I would just move that we, the list as presented right here, you're also, let's make it official, it's all, I mean...
You can call this the liaison list, but then we need a committee assignment list too because...
We have that, which is already a way to vote out.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we do that, just keep it simple.
Okay, so, well, I don't think, we didn't vote on the committee assignment list.
Didn't we?
Well, we did.
No.
For everybody.
We just did the annual...
But those were only for the terms that expired in 2023.
You're right.
Everybody wasn't on that list.
But do we need a vote on that?
No, but like...
Because you'd be a member anyways.
Do we need a vote to say I'm still a member of the Conservation Commission? I think we do.
Because your terms are not up.
Only if your term were up.
Right, and we already did that.
Right, so this would just be to make you an official liaison if you weren't already.
This is just a liaison.
This is liaison and that's fine, but what I'm saying is I may be a member that, whose term didn't expire in 2023 and yes, I'm a liaison, but we need to vote that I'm a member of the board too, of whatever that committee might be.
Why?
Why would you do that, though? You're already a member.
Not in every case, though.
But you wouldn't be a member of something if you're a liaison to it, that's the point.
Liaisons can be...
Liaisons are not members.
They just interface.
Right, but we've got stuff on here where like I'm a member of the Economic Development Committee. I'm not the liaison, I'm the liaison because I'm a member, but I'm a member first.
I know, but that, this is a liaison listing.
Right.
So every member of the, of the committee is not a liaison. This is just to designate you as liaison.
Correct, so then where are we designating all of the, all of the department? I mean, all of the committee and board appointments that were not expired in 2023?
On that same list that Lynn had.
Expended list that Lynn...
She just filtered out the ones for this year that we need to revoke.
So we need to, we need a list of, of the...
Is what I'm saying making sense?
A little bit, but I'm tired.
Okay, I think I see what you're saying.
You want to do the whole list?
No, put a different way. You're saying that if my term didn't expire on the board or committee, then there's no need to reappoint me anyway this year. I'm, I'm good to go.
Right.
And then we just do this as liaison?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I'm sorry, I'm exhausted.
No, it's all right.
I'm sorry that I beat that dead horse, okay?
The brain is not firing.
It is, the brain has left the building. I will entertain a motion to approve the Select Board liaison assignment with the addition of Mr. George as Parks and Fields and with Mr. Heel joining me in the Recreation Committee and the rename of the McQuon, whatever it is.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And that, anything else that I skipped over?
Number two.
Oh, no, I mentioned that Carrie's not giving us an update, he's coming to the 27th meeting.
Oh, so the, the thing in here, we're tabling this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, he's coming to the 27th. So we're on to liquor licenses. I will entertain a motion to approve the liquor licenses as approved in the agenda.
So moved.
Seven.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then any burning desire to update people on committees?
I just got one for the High Street, that's it. And it's relatively, relatively quick. So we, we had a meeting yesterday and, just a couple of quick things. We did a walkthrough for irrigation and it went really well. One of the things that might come before the board, though, or might come before you, is trying to hire, the, the board made a, or the committee made a recommendation to get a irrigation plan done by, by an outside company. So we're looking for an invoice for that, but we want to make sure that we're able to, we have the money and we're able to pay for it, so if you don't mind, this board and through, and through you, if we could just make sure we have the funds. I have no idea how much it's going to cost, I have no idea. But we'll just try to give you whatever information we can and then just kind of go through the right process. But the goal is to irrigate the entire, get plans to irrigate the entire, the entire site. We also decided to break it up into phases. At the last town meeting, it was pretty evident, at least on the floor, that the town has an appetite to fund a playground on, on the High Street. So with the budget the way it was, we didn't want to present anything this town meeting, which is why you didn't get any articles looking to do any land clearing. But based off of the reaction that, that we saw there, we are going to be moving towards phasing the High Street area. So we're going to be looking towards getting some type of proposal for land clearing of the area. We're going to be looking for and start working on getting project lists for a playground for that area and start looking at trying to grade the roads. So we have lots of different pokers in the fire right now. So I know a lot of people have been looking towards what, you know, some movement. It really has been trying to figure out the players finding, you'd be surprised. You, you'd think there's a lot of places that do commercial and municipal irrigation systems, there aren't. A lot of them are really just residential companies that just don't have the ability to do this stuff. So that's what's been taking a little bit of time. That's all the big stuff.
So a couple of questions. So are, can, can you guys contemplate a separate water meter? Because I think up there, like I know everybody's working off of the food pantry water right now and that's where the bill is getting sent. So either the town probably needs to think about just paying the water bill for everybody up there or... Because I know it's become a bit of a little issue there.
Yeah, right now, there's a, there's a well that's been boarded off that we're looking to tap into just to see what's going on down there. That's, that's priority number one. We're not even sure if it works, so we're really like...
Well, the well that's right there?
Yeah.
That's like, that we covered because...
Correct.
The top, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and what, and I assume part of the funding for some of this stuff will be community preservation and maybe like some grant money?
We're looking at all kinds of funding sources. What, one of the things that we're going to do is because this has been an ongoing project for so long and people have been asking, rightfully so, lots of questions about progress and status, we're going to try and put together a presentation. I know we did a couple of, you know, when we changed the name, we did a couple of successes over the past couple of years. But we feel like it's been long enough that we really want to do more of a comprehensive presentation to, to show people what we've been doing, what we'd like to do, and that's going to be coming down the bike.
That's awesome, because I think the last time we heard from the Plymouth, final Plymouth county, because before it was renamed High Street, was maybe like some of those plans about, you know, plantings and historical, it was quite a while ago and it was with the very... Remember when you guys got the UMass folks out and they did the, it was like right after that with some of those kind of designs? So I think it would be good to hear because there's a lot of good work happening and just, we're just not hearing about it, which is what happens to all of us, so...
And just as a reminder, all the meetings are public, so people can come to those. And a lot of folks might see the stakes out there now. And one of the reasons why we did that was because we wanted people to be able to physically see where certain structures were going to be based on the plans. So feel free to come to some of those meetings. That's it for that for now. And then the other one is the Transfer Station Task Force.
Yeah.
We had a really, really good meeting last Friday. Melissa and Mike are doing it, Melissa, Penetti and Mike Dugan are doing a fantastic job, as well as Eric, he's a great resource, helping us out. We had some folks from state agencies come in and give us just basically a rundown on the cost benefit of a whole myriad of different ways that we can, you know, utilize a transfer station, look at optional things. And they're actually taking all of our data on transfer station stickers and bag fees and all that stuff. And they're actually going to be working on giving us a recommendation of what they think the appropriate fees and supplemental funds would be. Nothing, nothing's etched in stone, it's literally just like giving us data to be able to present.
So this is just state working with us on this?
We get all, yeah, we get all kinds.
Amazing. And so this is just like a resource that, like they're just willing to take our data and help us, you know, get, manage that and massage that data so we can make a decision.
I've learned more in the hour that we met last Friday than I have in the last 10 years.
That's amazing.
They have done, now they're going to be looking at us, looking at a whole bunch of different things. I can't emphasize this enough, the task force is not here to make decisions. We do not act on behalf of the Board of Health. All of our, the meetings are recorded, so people can actually see them online, I think if they're going there. It's really just designed to just give information to people. I really do recommend, though, that people watch the last recording of the meeting because you're going to get so much information.
That's awesome.
It's absolutely fantastic.
Well, that's great, and yeah, thank Mike, Mike and Melissa.
Yep.
Eddie, anything else going on? Okay, we do not have the May 30th open session minutes because as you can imagine, it was the strategic planning session and that was a lot of moving parts for Ms. McDowell to work together in one week. So we will have those at our next open meeting. But I will entertain a motion to approve the May 23rd open session minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. And Ms. Green, you didn't have anything burning? You, you, I know you're losing your voice.
losing your voice, so, um, perhaps if you want to give us an email, um, and, you know, make sure that we don't reply, um, so that we're not violating open meeting law, um, but, uh, with, with any pertinent updates, is there anything that you'd like to tell us about now?
So, um, yes, because it, it happened, just, it happened today, um, and it has to do, circle around with, um, grants and the Route 14 tip program, uh, project. Um, Tony DeFries and myself had a meeting today with Old Colony Planning Council. Um, they, they came with their team to the town hall and we met with them, um, and we basically found out that Old Colony Planning Council had applied for grants on behalf of the municipalities, um, in, in various areas and have been awarded these grants, uh, which means the Towne Hansen will be receiving some grants. They don't have exact yet, but it's good news. So we will be finding out, um, I believe one of them, one of the grants does, um, focus around brownfields, which would include light control and 751 Main Street.